Alright, calling the February 8th, 2022, Pelham City Schools Board of Education Meeting to Order. Starting by acknowledging AV 361, where we are going to revisit every thirty days the conditions, and continue meeting in this hybrid fashion as long as we're in this pandemic. Do we have any comments from the public on closed session items?
I have one number of the public.
Okay.
Other than the students.
Okay, we'll open the chat for like half a minute in case you'd like to make a comment on something in the closed session. Alright, we are gonna close the chat and adjourn to closed session. Alright, we can begin.
Good evening, everybody. I want to go here within seven adoption approval of the agenda. We need to make an amendment. We need to amend. Action item fourteen point one point two, first reading of the fourth bylaw revision. I just want to note that we need to move that over to discussion. Move that into discussion. It's not an action item.
You need to go down there.
I move to move fourteen point one point two to the discussion item.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on to the public hearing. What is the public? Is there a public hearing?
No.
What is it?
That was a placeholder, I think.
Am I missing something? Okay. Alright, adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
As amended.
As amended?
As amended.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, special recognitions, reports and presentations. Looks like we have McKinley, McNair, PAX, CASA and Petaluma High School. Okay.
So we've got McKinley slash PAX, but we are missing one of the students.
Okay, which student do we have currently? McKinley or PAX?
Oh, it's, 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 it's.
Oh.
We're just missing one of the students.
Oh.
Hi, everyone. It's Mrs. Larson here. It is a combo McKinley-PAX, and I just want to introduce my Petaluma Accelerated Charter leadership team who's taking the lead on this amazing presentation. So we're gonna go ahead and we weren't sure if everyone was gonna make it tonight. So Anya, start us off.
Lucy came up with the introduction.
Yep, we are the PAX leadership team, and we're here to present to you this video we made about McKinley and PAX.
What was your favorite project this year?
I liked doing the outstanding project this year.
Well, my favorite project this year was when we did our Native American project. It was really fun because I got to learn about a lot of cultures.
What is your favorite thing about McKinley?
Mmm, soccer.
The ma'awa.
But I like a lot of McKinley, I can, ah, they had a much different thing.
Me, this is what, la parte porque, porque pero se habla con mis amigos.
Yo amo escáctor porque mi, me enseña matemáticas.
I like how there's an excellent program and how like if, if like they help you a lot if, if like you need, if you need more help.
Aunque es una escuela muy grande y puedo jugar fútbol con mis amigos, cuando es recreo.
Gem, chay McKinley, lejano a la community.
My favorite thing about McKinley is that because it's a, it's a relatively small class, the teachers can really get some of you and push you to do your best.
Favorite part about McKinley is the curriculum. I think every subject has its own good like program, and I think I've learned a lot.
Really friendly and it's because such a small school, like you know everyone there.
I feel like the teachers at McKinley are really nice because they're really supportive and they help you every step of the way.
Me gusta mi maestra.
How do you feel you contribute to the McKinley community?
During Kindness Week, we organize an entire week to promote kindness for everyone in our community.
And I did this one with a partner and his name is Will.
During Kindness Week, I wrote a letter to my teacher.
We made posters for our Kindness Week.
Being a part of leadership, we made posters to make the school aware of a code drive weekend.
Thank you all. Thank you. Awesome leadership team. You're amazing. I love our video.
Thank you.
Awesome, Adrian.
Alright, looks like, looks like McNair's up next.
Here. There's a couple still missing. Let's give them one second.
Um, I don't think they're there, Melissa.
There are not just these three? Okay. Well, we will go ahead and start. I'm Melissa Beckerman. I'm the new principal at McNair, and I have had an awesome time getting to know these students and getting to learn about the community. And so our leadership team has made a slideshow for you. So ladies that are here, why don't you go ahead and begin? Pop, our first person's not here, so I'll go ahead and start. Poppy, are you here? No, okay. So we, uh, good evening, esteemed Pelham City School Board. Thank you for letting us share tonight. We're the student leadership team. We're the founding four through sixth grade team, and we, we began meeting a few weeks ago. We are proud that we are all determined to make this the best year yet at McNair. So far, we have worked on developing student-centered playground rules, created junior guard supervisors, selected fun spirit days, celebrated the great kindness challenge, and have worked as a team to problem solve issues that we care about on our campus. At our next meeting, we will be designing buttons that we will wear on campus to identify ourselves while we're helping work with younger students.
We enjoy working together as a team to make school announcements, and we will be planning school community service over the next few months. During Kindness Week, we created posters and then welcomed our students to each morning. It was fun to open doors and say good morning to the kids, the parents, set the day right off. We surprised our students with the delivery of new playground balls with our new playground expectations, and everyone was so happy. We discussed the rules we currently had at school and why they were or weren't important. From, from there, we chose different popular playground games and made rules that have made playground more safe and fun. As our kickoff to Kindness Week, we thought a smiley face balloon in each classroom would brighten everyone's day, and they did. We plan on completing many activities this year that will help us learn to become future leaders.
She's on mute. Do you want, can you get yourself off mute, Evie? No, it won't let you turn off mute? I don't know if I can help you. Alright, Evie, I'll go ahead and read your one slide, and then you'll have another term if it comes back and you can get your sound up, okay? So we have, we have two librarians at our school, Ms. Carly and Cutter the Snake. Cutter is a friendly school snake who's lived at McNair for over fifteen years. Ms. Carly invites us in each week to check out books where we can, where we can sit in the quiet room and hear a story. Ms. Carly is an excellent reader, and she gets everyone excited about reading. This month, we're having three guest illustrators and authors, Mac Barnett, Carlin, Carson Ellis, and Chud, Chud Whitick. We will have a book fair coming up in March, and we'll have an all-school Read Across America Day. Our goal is to instill a love of reading into all of our students by helping everyone have some books they love to read each week by, when visiting the library. And Cora, do you want to read this next one for her since she's not here?
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
McNair is focused on hands-on learning. We love to build and explore a beautifully equipped mask room and maker's room. Last week, sixth graders students used microspoke, microscopes to examine onion skins and recorded their findings in science journals. To be, to become thinkers, you can clearly express your ideas with others. We learn to work in cooperative groups, creating hypotheses and figuring out solutions together. We take time that everyone is heard and that we don't give up until we've given our best problem solving. Our maker program has two parts, our high-tech mask room, which stands for McNair Art and Science Center, and our low-tech maker room. This month, Mrs. Becker will be working with each class in our, in our maker room on, on brown paper bag challenges where where we will work in
Triads.
Tri, sorry, in triads to build something. We will then, we will then compare our builds and seek out the best strategies so that we can understand the way things work.
We've also been working on constructing marble runs. These are the creations from Mrs. Garcia's third grade class. Our next challenge will be taking marbles and having them race down pegboards to discover how to make them go the fastest, the steepest, the slowest, and the most turns. We'll record our data and compare each class's results. Mrs. Lyon is working with our masked parents to develop a school, school-wide monthly challenges. Next month's challenge will be a mini card challenge.
Poppy is here.
Oh, she is? Okay.
Yeah, also, in our unique kindergarten building, we learned to play and create and sing. We love that our classrooms are big with a cooking area, life-size castle, imagine, imaginative play areas, science centers, our areas and their own playground. McNair loves our TK and Kimbickin because they are smart, kind, and cute. Last week, they were spotted walking around the school as junior scientists, investigating the outdoors with lab coats and keen observation skills. Have you ever seen our kindergarten classroom? It has a life-size, it has a castle that is epic. Kindergarten is a favorite memory of our upper-grade Falcons.
Poppy, do you want to do this slide since you're on now? You see her, Marina?
Melissa, I don't think she's on.
Okay, so Marina, you saw her on there? I don't think she's there, honey. Okay. She's, she's on. She's having technical difficulties. Okay, alright.
Do you know what name she's under?
Yeah, Papiano Nelson Smith. Yeah, yeah.
What was that?
Papiano Nelson Smith.
She's not showing up under that name.
Yeah, she's not showing up under that name.
Okay, we'll keep going then. Our student leadership team is amazing. We meet on, meet on Thursdays to discuss problems on our campus, and we brainstorm to resolve them. Um, we have wonderful group of parents who do recess renaissance on our playground. Sometimes they offer beading, button making, or small crafts because sometimes it's fun to do something other than play a game. There's enough space for everyone to find a game, a quiet space, or an activity that they enjoy. Sometimes classes come out to decorate the playground with chalk drawings or other positive sayings that encourage us to be kind.
Disco Fridays are the way we celebrate our hard work for the week. Sixth, sixth grade students take turns signing up as DJs as they spin tunes throughout recess while the students play, dance, and have fun with bubbles. Students can select songs, and our DJs screen the songs and create the song list for that week. Disco Fridays are already very popular. Last week, almost eighty-five percent of our school came in blue, yellow, and Falcon wear, and some people even wore boas. Y MCA and Never Gonna Give You Up by Rick Astley are two of our favorite songs right now. Our next two bonus spirit days were selected by us, and they will be Bring Anything But a Backpack Day and Twin Day for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Recently, we celebrated the Hundredth Day of School with costumes, activities, and a bulletin board of one hundred reasons we love McNair. Go ahead, Cora.
I'm
Our performing arts.
Uh, wasn't there more to that last slide or no?
You can keep going. That's okay.
No, oh, okay. Our performing arts program is, programs are really popular with our students and our families. Our directors care about us, and they give us the opportunity to try new personalities while on stage. They let us give input into seeds, and this year, I think Seismic will be our best musical ever. Dancing, singing, and stage design crew members mean there's, means there's something for everyone. McNair allows us to be ourselves, to take, to take risks, and because there's a lot of adults around to help us. Our school partners with outside, with outside community groups to strengthen our environmental science and maker programs. This year, the science department at SCO has been working our, with our teachers during environmental literacy trainings at their Wednesday meetings to learn ways to teach us hands-on lessons. Last week, last week, they came and made paper habitats and papier-mache animals. With one of our classes, we also work with Point Blue Science Organization and Straw. Straw helps us learn skills. We need to help resour our watershed. We enjoy working in our natural habitat to discover all the wildlife and plant life that are on our playground. Miss Sky leads us through hands-on gardening lessons that connect to our curriculum. Our seasonal garden produces gourds that are transformed into fairy gardens. Corn that is enjoyed, popcorn, and spring flowers that are presented as beautiful bouquets. We tend to, props, learning to weed. Um, and of this year, our TK grew corn and made popcorn. Our beautiful and flourishing, beautiful, our beautiful and flourishing working garden sits, sits at the heart of our school and near the lunch tables so that we can actively interact with the growing space every day. Can I, can I do this last one?
Absolutely.
Alright, our school is happy. We care about each other, and we want to make our school the best school in Petaluma. We have buddy classes so that our older students can make good relationships with a younger student to make them feel happy at a school and to make us feel connected. When you look in the classroom windows, there are lots of projects that connect academics to environmental, environment and art. Our SDC class last week, students shared papier-mache animals that they created in habitats that they made with a partner. Students working in pairs to share, um, where, to, to share presentations that include an oral report explaining the animal and sharing a video. Students are guided by the scientists department at SCO. We, we bring our community resources together to bring out the best in our students. We love McNair and hope you do too. Thank you for listening.
Good job, ladies.
Thank you very much. Alright, um, next up, we have our high schools. Like CASA? Hi, Carissa.
I'm sorry, I just came out of a gymnastics practice. Um, I will wait for the presentation to get up. Hi, so as you just heard, I'm Carissa. I'm one of the ASB presidents at CASA Grande right now. Um, and I'm here to tell you about December through February in the Big House. To kick us off with our sports, pun intended, um, both of the soccer teams are doing phenomenal. Um, the boys' and girls' soccer teams are both having amazing seasons. Um, on another side of our campus, our United Anglers program is now officially the carriers of critically endangered Coho salmon from Santa Cruz. The first of many deliveries came in a few weeks ago. Moving forward, we are going to have drop-offs every Tuesday and Thursday for a while until we hit our mark of eighty thousand to a hundred and, hundred thousand eggs. These eggs are cared for by environmental conservation students, and I personally am friends with quite a few environmental conservation students, and they are all thrilled about this. Uh, the gardening and nursery management classes cook their pizza in their garden pizza oven with the assistance from the culinary arts program. They were making the dough from scratch, topped it, and cooked it in the garden and enjoyed some time outside, enjoying time together. The music department has a new baby grand piano added to the instrument collection. Choir and dance students alike are enjoying the new piano and getting tremendous use out of it. Flipping back to sports, also pun intended, um, our wrestlers are amazing. Sekiko Pazorno, our, one of our senior wrestlers, is still undefeated. Boys' varsity is still undefeated. CASA Grande sixty and Vintage twenty at a recent meet. And we'd like to congratulate seniors Sam Ferkis, Sekiko Pazorno, Emmett Peterson, Ryan Noggle, Tim Vestnes, Zach Babel, Trevor Lival, Carlos Guzman, Medina, and Jack Martin on a wonderful senior night. Still on sports, we are very proud of our sports in the Big House. Both the girls' and boys' teams are having a phenomenal season. Uh, this one's actually personal to me, um, but one of our rooms, H five, which was previously the disciplinary office, um, has now been renovated to a mental health safe space as, um, I, Girl Scout Gold War. Um, so this is now a place where students can go and decompress and take whatever time they need. Um, Project True, which stands for T, Are You Educated?, is a youth leadership development program facilitated by the Center for Wellbeing that utilizes a peer-to-peer education model focusing on tobacco, cannabis, and alcohol. Project True provides youth opportunities to gain confidence and skills around leadership, advocacy, public speaking, and research. Youth also learn about mental health and positive coping skills to better support their peers. Project True is now working at CASA with students to create presentations on substance use and its effects on mental health for other students. Similar to what I heard, um, McNair and McKinley talking about, ASB is hosting a Kindness Week this week. Yesterday, donations were taken for Pennies for Polio. Today, there were a bunch of positive sticky notes all around campus. Tomorrow is wearing yellow for Positivity Day. Thursday, we are distributing cookies, and everyone who comes and gets a cookie will also receive a cookie. And Friday, we will be donating all fundraised money to Pennies for Polio. And much like most application-based classes, ASB is beginning the application process and on the search for the next generation of ASB students. As a senior, I'm a little sad that I can't pick up an application, but excited to see what the program holds. And now I've got some news about what's coming up. So the Gaucho, the GQ event is making a comeback. Formerly known as Mr. GQ, is now going to be the Gaucho Quarterly Charity Event. So, um, it's making a comeback, and the revamped focus is on inclusivity and giving. So our two biggest changes are that, um, now instead of just males in the senior class being able to participate, anybody from the senior class is able to participate, um, and we are focusing more on giving and making it more clear that this is a charity event, and, um, all money raised will be going to the charity that the winning Gaucho is representing. Now, this one's a secret, so don't tell anyone, but ASB is working on some staff appreciation, so don't tell any CASA staff that you know. And that is what has been happening at the Big House.
Thank you. Great job. Alright, so, looks like Petaluma High next.
Hello, I am Nicoletta. I will be presenting Petaluma High Schools. Um, what we've been doing since the start of the semester. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this to share my screen. Is that it? Okay, there. Hmm, okay. Is it working? I'm so sorry.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So starting off, um, our winter sports are actually wrapping up this week. A part of our winter sports, we have our boys' and girls' soccer team, boys' and girls' basketball team, and wrestling. And this is actually our last week of league this week, and we have multiple of our winter sports teams are going to playoffs. Our girls' soccer team is, and our boys' basketball team, and we are both very proud of that. And then along with girls' soccer, we have our senior nights. And then along with girl soccer, we have our senior nights, which have been happening. Last night, we just had our boy, our girls basketball senior night and tonight is our boys basketball senior night. And so what we've been doing for this is for our senior nights this time around. We have little plaques made for each of the seniors of their respective sports. And we paint them and then we give them out to them on senior night. And then also with our indoor senior night sports, since there is no students allowed to the game and oftentimes some parents right now, we've actually. Our, we've been live streaming the games and for this scene, for our senior nights, we actually are having like a. Projection of the games on like outside of the gym. And so we can have parents and students watch and still support the teams. And we've made many decorations for the sports teams just to show like they still have our student support from them. And then also recently, we've had our class registration going on. And so this includes, our counselors have been going to all of our freshman, sophomore, and junior classes to be registering. All of our students for next year's classes. As a senior, it's like a little bittersweet not to have that registration going on. It's kind of like just insane that I am going to, going to college next year. But it's always a fun time to register for your classes next year. And then on campus, we've also had various Valentine's activities going on. Our sophomore class is currently selling candy grams at lunch, which includes, you can buy a lolly pop from the sophomore class along with a little note. And you can send it to whoever you want to on campus. And it's the first sophomore fundraiser that they've ever had, so it's really exciting for them. And similarly, our choir is doing singing Valentines and this is always a hit at school. It's basically kind of like candy grams. You can buy a singing Valentine for anyone on campus and choir will go into like the class that you request of them. And they will go and sing to them during class. And recently, we've had multiple clubs like Circle of Friends and also our human interaction classes. They have participated in the PPC SC Special Delivery Project, which is basically making homemade Valentines. For elderly and just you gotta send them and just to give them a little Valentine treat. And then starting, I think it started around in November, our Troy store opened up again and they sell every break. And what it is, it's basically you can buy Troy gear from them. They sell popcorn and their best seller is hot chocolate. And you just see everyone at break, they'll have their hot chocolate and popcorn. And it's been really popular and our Troy store is run by our entrepreneurship class. And our jazz band is currently, they're on February eighteenth, they are going to be performing with the Gun Heild Carling Band. And originally this was scheduled for the end of January, but due to COVID, it got pushed back to February eighteenth. And then the senior class right now is currently working on putting together a senior video from all of the moments from our senior year. And we're hoping to display it at our senior sunset at the end of the year. And so we're in the works to be getting like videos from everyone on campus who's been a senior, just so we don't just limit it to like our ASB videos. But rather from the whole student body. And so we've had, our TBC has been running announcements and we have a Google form to everyone to. Submit their favorite senior videos. And then recently, our environmental club, I think it was Saturday, January twenty ninth. They had a tree planting event and it was on Saturday outside of school. They hosted just like where we planted trees in the front of our school. And currently we have spring sports coming up. And tryouts are this week, I just came from lacrosse tryouts. And our spring sports include girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, softball, baseball, and track. And then coming up at Petaluma High School, similarly to Casa, we have our GQ performance on March twelfth. And like Casa, we also do not have it just open to male participants this year. We do have female participants and I'm a part of planning the show and it's going pretty good so far and I'm really excited for it to happen. And we also have our neon dance coming up in April. Originally, we were planning on having our winter formal, actually it was supposed to be last week. But with COVID, we just decided to postpone it and we pushed the dance back until April and we're just gonna have a neon dance instead. And then we also have a various like Valentine's lunchtimes activities coming up this Friday. And then along with, we have a Super Bowl lunchtime activity, which will be happening next Friday. And yeah, that's just a little bit of what Petaluma High has been up to.
Thank you very much. Good job. All right. Next up, um, comments from the public on non-agendized items. So we're going to open the chat for a few minutes. Please put your first and last name in the chat. And um, also the topic that you would like to speak about. And this is on non-agendized items. So I'm gonna read our board uh, public comment policy while the chat's open. Right, under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we carefully listen and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a twenty minute, twenty minute limit per subject matter. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you are cut off or warned previously, please consider that your warning. You can also submit your input in writing by email or other means to the superintendent, board members, or other designated staff. All right. Oh, that's it. Thanks for the reminder. So we just have the one, I guess? Is there any, is there anyone else I cannot do? With my glasses in the closet. Oh, okay. I'll let you decide, Matthew, when to close the chat. All right, so I will start by reading our first comment that was sent over email. It was from Linda Judah. I would like to add a comment to the meeting. I would like to request the board meetings continue to be conducted with a Zoom attendance as an option. This greatly increases accessibility and it makes it much easier for many more people to attend. Thank you. Okay, and so um, who is up on the meeting? Who's our first?
Peter Costas. Go trustees, go updates.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep, hi Peter.
Good evening, good evening. Good to see everybody again. Maybe I can show up there in person one of these days.
Come on down.
That would be great.
You know, first of all, I, I gotta say, I, I so much enjoy your student um, reports. Um, you know, you always make them a, an integral part of your board presentations for all the years I've been coming there and um, just um. Incredible participation and you know, what a great idea at, at Casa, changing a, a discipline room into a, a mental health room. I mean, that's, that, that, that was just, you know, incredible. So just a, a few updates here. You know, um, last week, the SCO board, uh, we passed a resolution uh, honoring and appreciating school counselors for school counseling week and. I mean, the work that they do is always incredible, but especially during these times, it's, it's just been critical. So we honor, you know, all school counselors and we can put in school psychologists and everybody else that's associated with, with counseling. As you must know that uh, we have a, a contested uh, election for the county superintendent coming up in June. Uh, it's gonna be, uh, somebody's gonna have to fill the big shoes of Steve Harrington, who was really provided a lot of leadership, especially over the last. Four years with the fires and the smoke and, and now with, with, with COVID. So we have uh, Amy Carter, she was a former Rancho Cotati principal and now she's a Marin County Office of Education Assistant Superintendent. Uh, Ron Callaway, he was a long time superintendent at Mark West Union School District. And Brad Cascarelli was the principal of Hidden Valley Elementary School in uh, in Santa Rosa. So SCO's gonna do a couple of um, forums uh, for these candidates to speak to the public. One will be in the spring. And if there is a runoff election for the fall, then we'll have the second forum in the fall. And um, finally, I just wanna share with you that um, there's gonna be a, a school and college. School and college services are gonna put on a um, new legislation workshop for all um, school administrators and board members. And this will be on February twenty second um, at two PM. I'm sure it'll be on Zoom, so that's of course, as always, it's free. And uh, you can go to the, the SCO website and register for that. And finally, and as always, I just um, thank you for, thank you for your service. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Sarah, Sarah Sechek, follow up on BIPOC Student Forum. Hi Sarah.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi Sarah.
Hi, how are you? Long time no see, you wonderful people. Thank you for doing the work that you're doing. I wanted to first off, give a shout out to Ellen Webster for uh, coming out to Mary Collins School, Cherry Valley the other day. I um, and I've also heard from other schools where you all are coming in to visit to have office hours and be listening in and talking with the parents. And it is being received very well. Um, we are very thankful for that type of participation and coming in and, and letting us share our voices with you one-on-one. So thank you so much. I was so happy to see you in our wonderful library. Um, I wanted to follow up on something now, I haven't been here in person, but I've been watching. Or I guess on Zoom, but I've been uh, watching the, the replays and there's been a couple of. Um, conversations in regards to following up on the student, the BIPOC Student Forum wherein they were speaking out in regards to. Feelings of um, marginalization and being left out and, and, and fears for the students who are coming below them and after them. And I'm curious as to what's been happening um, on a district level as far as how we're addressing that. I know that we're in between things with Circle Up and, and, and the contract wise, that's challenging. Um, uh, but I've also seen um, some callouts for requesting information on that. And I just would love to hear more follow up on what's happening in order to meet the needs of those students. Both um, social and emotionally, as well as just um, within policies in the schools. So I wanted to thank you all again. It's good to see you all here. You all inspire me on the daily. I really appreciate all the hard work that you've been doing. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. All right. Next up, uh, report on activities and correspondence. Um, since the last board meeting, we have had office hours at McNear, Cherry Valley. Sorry, I guess just McNear and Cherry Valley. Um, Live Oak. Oh, and Grant. Uh, Live Oak Strategic Planning Meeting. Um, and then our student board member, soccer games against Sonoma, TAM, Casa, and American Canyon. And then Casa again. All right. Cool. Next up, comments from the public on consent agenda items. Not gonna reread the policy, same policy. We'll open the chat for a few minutes, first and last name in the chat and the item that you would like to speak about.
I think we can close the chat. Let's see, there, there are no comments.
Okay. All right. Moving on, um, to the consent agenda. Need motion?
Move to uh, approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, any comments, questions? Maddie, I'll let you go first and so I don't forget you at the end.
Uh, I actually have, uh, I haven't, well, I have one question about the articulation agreement, the hospitality management. I just wanted to um, I, I, my only question was um, whether this is, you know, uh, an already existing class. That is, and this is just like uh, the paperwork for articulation. Uh, so it's really coming from the JC? Because this, if it's a new class, it hasn't come before us, that was the only thing I was wondering.
Yeah, this is a renewal, uh, a four-year renewal um, for our students' partnership with um, Santa Rosa Junior College.
Fabulous.
Sure, yeah. I've got a question on the fiscal, on the um, what do we call this thing? The audit, thank you, the audit, yeah. On the uh, towards the end, on the summary of the audits results, uh, I'm looking at page sixty-nine. You know, there, there are three, I guess they're characterized as kind of minor uh, deficiencies. The one that I, I was just curious about was obligations to private schools uh, under S R one. I didn't even realize we had obligations to private schools under S R one. Could you tell us about that, Chris?
Sure, I think um. You'll notice there was three audit findings and they all related to um.
COVID.
Basically, I mean, that's essentially what happened is with COVID, there were some items missed. Um, specifically reaching out to some of our partner, um, non-public schools or private schools to see if they wanted to participate. You know, part of it was, we're all in a pandemic, we're all um, not operating school. And so I think it would have been challenging either way. And it wasn't that we hadn't reached out, I think it really was a documentation, making sure we could actually show um, the documentation that, that. The department had reached out to them.
So under S R one, we were, we reached out to private, the private schools in our jurisdiction? Is that what the deal was?
Yes, similarly to Title One, we're obligated to reach out to the private schools and see if they want to participate. And then we allocate a certain dollar amount to them based on their um, bringing with these meals or whatever pupil count, they qualify under. So that was an obligation under the S R one as well.
And then the subsequent S R's, it was directly from the feds? We didn't have to do that, is that right?
We'll be doing it this year, we'll be reaching out this year to those private schools.
That was it for me.
Malaya or Katie, do you guys have any comments or questions on any of these items? No? Ellen or Caitlin? No?
I would, I would just like to give a little, a little background into um, twelve point three point three, the PCS Overnight Field Trip Request. If you remember several months ago, Dr. Mace talked about overnight field trips being high-risk activity, highly discouraged. We followed suit and we kind of were, we had a, well, we had a sort of guidance around overnight field trips that we were highly discouraging them at the end of time. Um, at this point, our students five, five and above have ample opportunity for, to, to get vaccinated if they or their families so chose, choose to do so. Um, including clinics at several, at several of our own campuses. And also our, our county, our, our COVID numbers in Stone County and, and the nation are dropping. Um, I was at the superintendent meeting county on Friday and kind of did a, took a temperature gauge of, of the, the room. And following suit with the majority of districts in the county, we're working on updating our overnight, overnight field trip guidance. Um, to drop the vaccination requirement and include the testing component. field trip guidance, um, to drop the vaccination requirement and include the testing component into the overnight field trip. So of course, we're still encouraging students to get vaccinated, um, ideally, also testing. Even students who are vaccinated or are having symptoms, we want to try to catch before they go on a field trip to avoid any serious risks. So those are, and then Tony, if you want to add anything about the actual field trip facilities, where they're going, the COVID policies that you looked up?
So another part is just asking the, the schools to do due diligence on finding out if the venues that they're going to also provide any kind of safety measures in regards to COVID, um, especially if they're flying on a plane and going somewhere, you know, like, you know, out of state. We really wanna make sure that there's some safety protocols in place where they're going, or as much as possible, um, kids are having the best, uh, chance to be safe and, uh, and able to participate in a safe manner.
But essentially, at this point in the pandemic, believing that students, we're starting to return to some sense of normalcy, students are, we deeply need this sort of this, this sort of activity, and that's, that's the direction that we're, we're heading in. So just wanted to give, we're an update on that.
So is it an either or? Either they're vaccinated or they test negative?
I believe some of the, some of the districts, it's a, it's a testing before as well, because, you know, myself as an example, you can be vac, vaccinated and boosted and still have symptoms.
Right.
We wanna make sure that as they're, as they're going on their field trip, we're catching anything before students.
So they'll all be tested before they go. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Wow. Moving on. Comments from the public on action items. We'll, uh, leave the chat open for a little bit less than a minute, first and last name and what you would like to speak about.
There are no comments, no public comments.
Okay, um, all right. Action item, 14.1.1. Um, are you still comfortable continuing in a hybrid fashion? Um, I was just wondering if, uh, this is future business, or are we gonna address this here? I would love to invite, uh, the people who are presenting Student of the Month back in person.
Yeah, it'd be great to invite them in person but not require it.
Yes, I agree. I would love to see them back here.
Starting, starting, when was it, do this?
The next meeting?
Next morning, okay.
Isn't, um, the van lifted like on the 11th?
Yeah.
Well, the state, the state one, the county one is to be determined.
Okay.
Oh, that, that one was.
So to clarify that, I think, I went to 15th, I mean, I've had questions come up from a lot of different people. So this, um, schools, um, public transportation airplanes, there's, there will not be lifting the mask, uh, masking for public schools, for public or private schools in the state with that, with our, that won't be, that'll be more of a CDPH decision, so.
But would it be okay to invite those?
We could, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but masks, right?
Well, of course.
Oh, I, I thought, I thought you were asking about the, um, what do you call it, the shelter in place? No, you're talking about that, not the mask.
No, 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 I, but, so would it be okay for us to extend those invitations as long as the mask?
Yes.
And, or give them the option?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So we could have, you know, could be a hybrid situation where some, some students are, are able to come in person and present, great, and some they present via Zoom, you know, if you want me to, to extend the invitation.
Yes, that'd be great.
You'll do that.
What do you, Katie and Malai, what do you guys think? Yeah, you're comfortable having people back? Yeah?
Awesome.
Okay, cool. All right. So we have to vote on this, right? All right.
I move to approve.
AB 361?
Hybrid option two.
Yeah.
Right?
To continue with hybrid option, yeah.
Yeah.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, board bylaw revision.
So that was, we moved that.
Well, that was moved, never mind. See, I ignored my own arrow. Okay. Student attendance calendars.
I'm gonna have Jason just do a quick intro of this one, just to explain the process.
Sure. So, um, the calendar committee consists of representatives from, uh, from our district administration, from PFT, from CSEA. It, um, we also, and confidential, we also include, uh, one member from one of the neighboring districts, so Mike Gardner, the superintendent at WA, joined us for our calendar committee, uh, this year. And, uh, we wanted to make sure this year that we included a lot of input in the, in the development of the calendar. So we started by a survey of, of all of our stakeholders, both, uh, employees and, um, families, before we even put anything out, and asked them some questions about what was important to them in a calendar, and what were some strengths of previous calendars, what were some challenges that they found with previous calendars. We had over 500 responses to go through, um, and realized that open-ended, 500 open-ended responses take a lot of time to go through. Um, and then we took that input and we drafted a calendar, and then we post, published that calendar out as a draft for both the traditional and the year-round, and we again asked for feedback. This time, it was less open-ended, which made it a little bit easier, with more percentages that we could see, and we took that into account. And our, our thinking did change. So if you were tracking on this, if you saw the first draft and now you see this one, there were some changes that we made based on the input that we got from parents and different input that we got from teachers. So there were different factors as we were developing the calendar that were really pressure points, like, how long should Thanksgiving break be, and when should we start our winter break or finish it? Like, those were all challenging, and, uh, the, the feedback from our stakeholders helped us to make a, what we felt was the best decision. Calendars are always hard. You know, there, there's somebody that's gonna be unhappy with whatever you go with, so, but we felt that we did our very best that we could to weigh all of the stakeholder input and come up with two calendars in a thorough process to try and, and, uh, come up with something that would fit our district. And so that's what you're looking at is, is the two resulting drafts for '22 to '23, um, that we're bringing forward tonight. We also worked on next year, so we have drafts of those, but we're, we were gonna still be looking at those and considering those and, and bring those to you later, um, just so we aren't having to do two, and if we wanna make revisions, we won't have to revise something you've approved.
So we're anticipating the '23, '24 coming sometime, sort of, sort of summertime, so we'll have to always be, maybe a year and a half planned out. So then the calendar committee will be again. So we always, you know, right now, we're only, we have six months left in this calendar, five months left in this calendar, people need to plan further. So, well, we'll be at least a year and a half, I'm trying to say at least a year and a half to two.
You know, one thing, one thing that we have done in the past was we were doing two years at a time, so we meant this year to plan the next two years. As a committee, we decided, you know, let's meet next year and plan the next two years, so we'll, we'll be, we'll never, we'll always be ready at, in, at the summertime to publish the following year. So we're trying to be more advanced, plan farther out.
Jason, do, are they voted on by, by the staff, by classified and certificated?
Voted, they're not voted on. So the, the input, the input is, they, they share their input, and it was a range of input, as you can imagine, but, uh, we use that as a, as a group to, to make adjustments. And the nice thing was that, at least in this case, the input was, was really clear, um, around those, those questions that were hard to answer. Uh, we felt that, that we got clear messages from our stakeholders about which way we should go with things.
And Ellen, it's, it's a contractually defined process.
So I wondered about the parent-teacher conferences, because we had heard about, you know, how parents are saying it was working around for too long. I see it's only one week in the spring semester, which just sounds great, but then it's still two weeks in the fall. So what, what was the feedback around that from parents and teachers?
That, that feedback was, um, we did, we did see a lot of feedback around that, about how difficult two weeks was. We also, um, felt that there, while we had an interest in, in looking at that, we need some more discussion, because there's things around negotiated days, um, and if you're changing that to a different model, where, for example, one idea that was talked about in the, in the group is, you know, could you do a full day, do, you know, four days, four and a half days of the elementary and a full day? Well, that comes back to, to negotiated days and that sort of thing. So there's, it's a bigger, it's an important conversation, but it was a bigger one than just, well, these parents want this, let's just change the whole thing. So it was definitely on our radar, and something that we're gonna come back to, to try and see what we can do about that.
So it would have to be part of negotiations?
Yeah, that's only one aspect of it. There's many aspects. You know, it's also, it changes the way the school, school functions in the fall. Um, there's also discussions about, do we move it up into a different part of the year? So there, there were lots of different ways that we can address conferences, but we didn't feel we had enough, enough input and enough process to make that significant of a change, even though we know it's an issue that needs to be addressed, and we want to address it. It would be, we felt it would be premature to do it right now on this calendar.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions about the calendars? All right.
I move to approve the calendars, uh, as proposed on item 14. What number are we on?
1.1.
14.1.3, yeah, thank you.
Okay. The second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Board of Education meeting dates.
So I just wanted to give, sorry, before, before we get to this, before we get too much discussion, I just wanted to make sure the board knew this was, was revised.
Okay.
This has been revised now on the, um, on, on line, so for the public and for the board at the same time. Uh, I do want to make, make a point that the last row there for June, ideally, we would want, we would want that, the, the fourth Tuesday, the regular meeting, it says, um, keep on the revised, it says the 20th for public hearing, LCAP and budget, it should say the 27th. Chris, feel free to jump in. You need enough time to prepare for that, and then two days later before the 30th, well, honor before the 30th, we need to approve it. So it would, it would say June 13th, June 27th for the public hearing, the 29th for board approval.
And just, just to, uh, put a fine, a point on that, so we bring the preliminary budget to the very first board meeting in June, and then we have all of the state reports that we have to complete and have available for review by three days before the next meeting. So two weeks, at least 10 days, but two weeks gives us time to do that. And then remember, the public hearing has to be on a separate night from the final board adoption.
Right.
And that changed a couple of years ago briefly during COVID. They allowed us to do the public hearing and the board adoption at the same time, but that's why that two days, nothing changes from the public hearing to the final adoption date. It just is meeting the, the language of the law.
End of it? No.
Go ahead.
No, that's fine. There you go. Are you done?
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, thank you. And then, um, the January dates, they seem kind of late.
Yes, because if you look at, because based on the student calendar, you just approved.
Oh.
We, we are actually on a break until January 6th.
Uh-huh.
And so to come back, so that's the reason the rationale for have putting them on the...
So you think the 10th is too early? 10th and 24th?
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
It would give us two, it would give us two weeks before, from the start of the semester to the first board meeting. And then furthermore, the 31st would be two weeks before the 14th.
To prep, to prep and do board agenda review.
Well, especially if, you have the elections. Okay, cool.
Sorry, Matthew, I'm confused on the June 20th to 27th thing, because I just pulled up the posted calendar on the, on our website, and it says 20th. So do we need to amend?
We need to amend.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. It should say, it should, that last row should say June 13th, 27th, public hearing, LCAP and budget, 29th, fifth, third day. So we have a motion to amend, from the 20th to the 27th. We'll make that change before we publish.
And then I had a question about going a whole month between our March meeting and our April meeting. Is that gonna be a problem? I feel like we always approve a lot of stuff around that time of the year. I know that it's possibly an extended spring break, but we might be in there, we might not, we might be.
We may have the two-week pause, or why does that want to break, yes.
Same, girl. Yeah, why is there only one meeting in April?
Because we have two weeks of spring break in case of emergency.
Right. Okay.
Basically, calendar.
Yeah.
And, and I will tell you, it could, I mean, there could be the need for another meeting to call a special meeting, especially when we look at construction and contracts and stuff. But, um, other than, I think we can make it work.
I think we can handle it.
Okay, cool. Yeah, that was my one question, so.
Got it. Makes sense.
So I'll move to amend the posted calendar, uh, such that the June, the current June 20th meeting is June 27th for public hearing on LCAP and budget.
I'll second that question.
For 2023.
For 2023, thank you, yes.
I'll second.
Oh, I forgot the phrase, like, what am I supposed to say?
Okay, I move to approve the, uh, 2022, 2023 meeting dates as amended.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, next item. Jason, I think this is you again.
Yes, so this action item is, um, a variable term waiver request for an adaptive PE teacher to teach in special education, and to, um, have this, uh, to have this waiver go through, it needs to be an action item that we approve. Um, this is for an adaptive PE teacher. We didn't have a lot of qualified candidates. We did find one that needs this waiver in order to, um, fill this position.
Okay. I move to approve the term waiver request for an adaptive PE teacher.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
This is the same situation, um, but we're listing them, and they need to take action on each of them individually. This is a high school, an English teacher. Um, this person is, uh, not credentialed, but they're close to have almost all the requirements and already has an English degree. And so we're requesting, uh, that this variable term waiver be approved as well.
I move to approve this variable term waiver request.
Second. Um, I actually have a question about it. How far off are they? Because, I mean, it says they are on the C vest, but is there anything else?
Say that again, Joan.
Student teaching?
They, say that again.
Like, how far off are they from meeting the requirements besides the C vest?
That, that was the only, that's the only thing that's missing, is passing the C vest.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, Jason, do they enter as an intern then?
I'm sorry?
Is it, is, are, do they, are they employed as an intern?
Yes, they are currently, they are currently employed as an intern.
How did they get into the credential program without passing the C vest?
I'd have to, I'd have to, I'd have to look back at, at how that is. Um, I don't have an answer for that.
They got an intro, intro, intro credential, um, intro credential.
I just, I thought you needed to pass it before you get into the program.
Yes.
And this is just till the end of the school year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Looks like they're working with Hillary Kapp, is that what her name's on?
So we're, and we're working, obviously working to support them getting through so that they can be fully credentialed. Um,
Okay.
That's our intent.
Very secret persons.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right.
Still me.
1.7.
So, um, this is approval of assignments for outside the credential area. We did a number of these at the beginning of the year, uh, and these are three more that we are bringing forward to approve that were not brought earlier in the year.
I move to approve the assignments outside of the credential area.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, discussion information items. Next up, discussion information items.
So we, we have the fourteen point one point two.
Oh, I thought we were doing that later. Where do we move that down to?
To discussion.
To discussion.
I mean, we can do.
Oh, okay. Okay, fifteen point one point one, we are now. Jason?
All good.
Nothing to discuss there.
It's all good.
All good.
All good.
That's all that matters.
All right, fourteen, I guess it's fifteen point something, fifteen point one point two now, which was formerly the board bylaw revision?
Yes, so just wanna give a little bit of background here, um, while I was out, board member asked, uh, to bring this bylaw for discussion, so to change clerk to vice president slash clerk, um, as you can see from the, the amended item that's on the, on the agenda now, um, we took out, it was really about the bylaws, so we're, if you look at the agenda item, it's, you know, first, first reading of board bylaw revision, so we took out the board policies, just about that board bylaws, you can see that there's an impact notably to bylaw nine one zero zero organization, um, including the, the, the last sentence, if you look on that one around, that the clerk will then become the president next year, so I didn't cross that out, I don't know if, if I looked at, if I looked at the history historically, we haven't been following our board policies, so I, I took that out, but, I mean, this is just a discussion for you all to discuss, and give us some direction on how you, how you want to move forward. If we were to change the, this bylaw, there are, there are several, quite a few board policies that will, that will be impacted, like to bring them back one, what, to bring them back individually, not board policies, it would just be technical edits, right, to change clerk to vice president slash clerk, so, just kind of giving you the background here, so it's time, it's for, if this is an opportunity for you all to discuss, this is the direction you wanna go in, we will, we'll make it happen.
Because Maddie was the clerk, and she opted not to become clerk, and...
I looked at the history and then, we have a lot of presidents who are two-term presidents, so that's not happening.
And the passport I was on, Phoebe was a clerk, she never became president, so I would like, I would like to take that out, and that automatic. Because sometimes people are perfectly happy and they, they don't wanna be president, it's a lot of responsibility, so I just think we should take out that mandatory automatic rule.
Can we add something that allows student board members to be clerk slash vice president? Is there anything that would already prohibits them from being?
Close session?
Clerk, uh, yeah. Does it?
Well...
Um, well, I mean, I did notice that some of the responsibilities of the clerk are to sign, you know, don't.
So that's really not, okay.
That's really the only thing they have.
Yeah, close session too.
Sure.
I don't think, I'm happy to look, I'm happy to check legal, I don't, I don't think.
Sign a contract, I don't think we can, like, I'll do that, sorry.
I did have a question about the, uh, the duties of the clerk slash vice president, and that was number two, uh, it says maintain such other records or reports as required by law, um, in my short year, I don't remember doing any of that. It was two years ago, so, you know, but, uh, I, I don't know what that means, actually.
And the clerk doesn't, because the, the superintendent is the secretary.
Right, so do we need to keep that in there legally? I, I would assume it's legal language, but, um...
Maybe we should take it out.
Maybe we should, like, I, I don't know.
And no one will ever wanna be clerk.
Yeah, Maddie's not trying to be personally liable.
I, I think that, I think that's the intent, that, that's their responsibility, that's delegated to the superintendent, that delegates it to staff.
Well, that's what they said to the secretary.
Right.
But not, but this is maintain such other records or reports as required by law.
Uh-oh.
I think that means you have to keep every board packet you've ever received.
Well, you know what, I do, so. I even have all the budget reports, Chris.
To Chris's point, I think it's something you delegate, you delegate, that the clerk delegates the superintendent and staff, we're keeping track, we're keeping all of these documents.
Doing your job for you.
And doing the time job.
All right, any other concerns or questions about that?
Should that be changed?
With, where, where, where are you, Maddie?
Okay, so it's under bylaw nine one two three, that's to be amended, to read clerk vice, the duties of the clerk vice president, um...
So Maddie, I read that to mean that, you know, like, the, the few times that I have had to sign something, it was to attest that something actually happened, and that's...
But that's the next one, number three, signed documents as directed by the board on behalf of the district, and sign all other items.
That's a little different, there are some documents that I've signed that said such and such happened, it's just a, to, you know, witness to an event.
Oh, okay.
I think she's talking about two, Sheldon, I maintain such other records or reports as required by law.
That is, I mean, that's what I took it to mean.
You know, we, we could come back and provide clarity, we can get specifically what documents they might be referring to.
Well, and also, I don't think they talk about the presidency being a one term.
No.
That was what we...
Oh, you took it out already, okay.
I struck it out unless you wanna bring it back.
No, 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 no.
Thank you, and thank you for doing it, Matthew, I really appreciate it.
No, I should be...
I don't know why, but it just sounded like a clerk vice president sounded better.
For, if everybody agrees that the president should serve another term, so it should be an option.
It is, and if we take it out, it would be an option.
Okay.
It just says the board shall, it's just, it's just, each year, elect one of its members to be president, and another member to be clerk vice president, doesn't set a limit on the board.
No term limit, thank you.
So, are we happy with this, with these changes, anything, so we'll bring it back for, for a second.
For action, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
And then again, once, once this is done, then we'll bring the board policies one by one, so that you can look for them and they'll be taken away.
Okay. All right, um, educational services, equity study.
Yeah, so we're, we've been excited to receive the, the equity study report, uh, they gave us kind of the raw, raw report, and we've been going through it, and we realized it is a lot of information that would, would not do it justice with a ten-minute presentation.
Let's, let's put it this way, Tony and I spent about three hours looking through draft presentations, and then we, Tony had that here for a ten-minute presentation, he said there's no way it's gonna be a ten-minute presentation.
So we need a study session.
Yeah, so we would propose a study session where we can take the time to actually dive into the data, ask the questions we wanna ask, get clarification, make sure we truly understand, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So we have a proposed date for this study session.
What's that? Calendar editing or...
Yeah, we, we would propose March first, uh, probably five to seven.
March, I'm sorry, I didn't.
March first.
March first.
Tuesday, March first.
Yeah, and so it would be, it would be a study session, of course, all board members, student board members, welcome, you know, our, our, hence, public, it'll be a public, it's a public meeting to support a study session to go over the equity study, we're proposing March first, five to seven thirty, we think about two and a half hours, just to kind of keep that, that timeframe open.
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday, a non, non-board meeting date, does that work for everyone?
The only conflict is office hours at adult ed, but, so if we could just reschedule that?
We could, yeah.
Okay.
And then, the other nice thing about having it on a Tuesday, five, some thirty, we also, um, feel free to jump in, Tony, we wanna, um, really wanna engage with staff, teachers, staff with, with this, um, study, and so during, um, E R C, we talked about inviting our principals, um, and a teacher, staff from each site to come in and hear, listen, be a, be a participant, um, during the study session, and then kind of, when we talk about next steps, then they can, can continue with that meeting, so, um, if, if you're, if everyone here is good with the first, that gives Tony some time to now reach out to principals, gives many of our principals to participate and bring, um, a rep, a rep from their site.
I, I would ask that they're strongly encouraged that maybe to come, just like when we had that forum at the library three years ago, um, just super intense.
And it will be a hybrid.
Strongly encourage you.
Meeting.
The admin, the time?
Admin and, and, and a teacher.
And it'll be hybrids, yeah.
And then, are we gonna have it here? Because it feels like a lot of people for this space, I don't know if there's enough space.
We'll have a hybrid, it'll be.
Oh, hybrid, oh, okay, so we're not in...
They're welcome to them, welcome to zoom inside.
Okay.
We know that, uh, Arinda will probably zoom in, so it'll be, it'll be a similar format for us, that'll also probably increase our participation, um, yes, yeah, from the site. Okay, so, Tony, it sounds like the first works, and we'll...
I'll confirm everything and we'll set it up.
Great, thank you, for all your work on that. Um, future business?
But last, bylaws, what's last?
Yes, we'll, we'll, yeah, 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 yeah.
Anyone else, future business? Katie and Malia, is there anything that's, once you discussed at some point?
No. Oh, actually, I had a random, totally unrelated question, like, and I don't know if this happened recently or kind of a while ago, and I just wasn't aware, they remove class rank for Harlem High, do you guys know anything about that?
Yes.
No?
We can bring that up, we can have a discussion around that, Tony, did you hear her? Can you say it one more time, Katie?
Oh, I was just asking about, um, they remove class rank for Harlem High. Class rankings, I guess, and how, how we... Just for what reason, I just wasn't aware, I'm wondering about it.
Yes, it's an agenda, a future agenda. It's an agenda item, so we can...
You don't need an answer.
We can answer it now.
Can I, can I put it on a future agenda?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Future business.
Yeah, that's what, that we...
Good question.
Actually, that, I think, I love that, and also just the whole, uh, issue around class rank and...
So we'll just, we'll put it under as a discussion item, so, okay.
All right. Anyone else? No? All right, meeting, well, we're gonna reconvene to close session.
No, wait, what, what's that?
Did you have something?
Yeah, so I was curious about, I'm on diversifier narrative, I'm, I'm curious about how that's going with the board, and...
Okay, so...
Great, good, thank you.
So let's, um, we can add that to future business as well.
So you're asking, you're, you're requesting a diversifier narrative, sort of an update or, or a presentation?
Okay.
Okay, so we can put it on for, we can put it on that for, for discussion, and then see if you want to, if that's further, a larger presentation or, or just a discussion item, okay?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Anything else?
Okay, so we need to go to, back to close session.